Nate?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
John?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
The motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public input. This is a time and place for discussion items not already on the agenda. You got anything, please come up to the mic. All right. Perfect. We're making this really quick for you Travis. Approval of final payment request for housing rehabilitation in amount of $25,087.
This is the second house that's been done with the grant and this money is reimbursed through the grant process. Motion to approve.
I second it.
Yeah, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing. Public hearing for financial year 21 budget.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Fiscal year, sorry.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Yeah, motion is second. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
All right, let's go into public hearing at 7:00.
There have been no changes made on the budget since our last meeting.
And what's the number again?
11.62375.
And that went down from last year?
Down from last year, yes.
Okay.
And that's with everything that every department requested?
Yes.
Pretty much. I'm always looking to spend more money because she won't let me, but...
Don't make me have a workshop and explain how the budget works. I will do that. Everybody wants one.
Motion to go into public hearing?
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Resolution 09, 2020 approving fiscal year 21 budget.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I can second that.
You didn't, you did it for the budget. So you're gonna do the second?
Yep.
Okay. Motion is second. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Resolution 08, 2020 approving agreement with Pioneer Township.
We have had an agreement with Pioneer Township for many, many years. Cedar County is now requiring them to have an actual agreement with us. So everything is gonna be the same as it has been. It's just in writing now. So this will be a year-to-year agreement. It will be renewed automatically each year unless one of us changes it within 90 days of the expiration date. They have reviewed it and we'll approve it tonight and then we'll send it on to them to approve in their meeting.
Anybody got any questions?
Brandon is aware and I did send him a copy of it.
Any questions, Brandon? Everything look alright to you? Got a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by John, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Resolution 10, 2020 certify lien against property for snow removal.
This was a property on Main Street that did not shovel their sidewalk during this year so far, so we had to do it for them. So now we gave them 30 days to pay the bill and they did not pay, so we would like to certify it against the property.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Travis. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Resolution 11, 2020 certify liens against landlords for non-payment of rental inspections.
We're pretty much finished with all of the first round of inspections. Everybody, once they complete all the violations, pay the fees for the inspections, they get a certificate saying that they're good for three years. So in three years, we'll start this process all over again. One of these parties on here, 318 West South Street, have paid their fee, so we just have the two. The Truman Street and the one on Chestnut and South Street. So I'm gonna delete the one, but leave the other two on there.
Now, these liens, they have to pay that if they go to sell the property. Is that right? Or is it...
It will go on their property tax.
It'll go on their property tax. So if they don't pay it then, then they're delinquent on taxes.
Yes.
Is that right?
And what we did with these is, if you guys remember, we made them pay the initial inspection for the Lynn County to go out there. If they fixed all the violations by the time their re-inspection was, the city did not charge them for that. For that, the city picked up that cost. So most of the people complied with everything and we didn't charge them a second inspection fee. These people took a little bit longer to do that, so...
But they have complied now?
Yes. As far as the violations, they have complied. They just have not paid the fee for us to issue them their certificate.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sarah? New business. Discussion regarding parking ordinance for downtown area.
Doug had asked for this to be placed back on the agenda for this meeting. I think one of the topics of discussion was the downtown blocks. Instead of having it, no parking in the evening all year through, you guys were looking at changing that to just during the winter months.
Is that the only reason to have no parking down there? What about for street sweeping? Do you do that during the day or...?
We normally do that during the day.
Yeah.
We'll come in a little early and get it. For the most part, if we can't get the street sweeper in there, we use broom and shovel and get the, I mean after the spring cleanup that we do with the kids. That's pretty, pretty much the worst of it. And after that, it's just picking up a little bit here and there.
Okay.
And this is really just for overnight, right?
Overnight, yes.
Okay.
We changed it from, what, 5:00 to 6:00 in the morning? But we haven't changed the signs or anything yet because we were waiting to see if we were gonna keep it year-round or just during the winter. There was one other item that, when Travis was reviewing it, that we needed to change. It says you can't park within five feet of a fire hydrant, but what it should be is five feet on either side of the fire hydrant. So we're gonna clarify, we would like to clarify that in the ordinance also, since we're doing a, changing this ordinance again.
I was just curious, when did this went open?
I don't know.
Six? I know it's at least six, but I just wondered if it was earlier.
It is earlier, but if we're cleaning snow, they're pretty good about...
I'm just saying if we don't have parking from till 6:00 a.m. and they open at 5:00, that's an hour that technically her customers wouldn't be able to park there.
I think we made an exception of the business part, especially like on the snow emergency to businesses that are on the road.
So here's my only problem with that, and this is where I get really dicey with all of this. It, I think, puts you guys in a bad spot. If we have something in force and we're not enforcing it all the time and we're picking and choosing, I think that sets you guys, officers, up to somebody being like, well, they're picking and choosing when they implement these laws and they're just not doing that because that's somebody that they know or something like that. And I don't think that that's fair. I think by setting a law like that, we are putting you guys at a disadvantage. And so I'm just curious if we need to just relook at the whole thing, if we could find out when she's open.
But wouldn't it be, I mean, because they wouldn't technically be overnight. They'd just be showing up for work.
Well, if you don't have parking from till 6:00 in the morning, you can't park there.
Because it used to be 5:00 and you guys changed it to 6:00 when we discussed this last time.
So even like on a snow emergency then? If you have a snow emergency that goes from one day to the next?
They cannot if there's a snow emergency.
I'm just saying that if we have a business that's open downtown and we shut parking down from 2:00 to 6:00, maybe that parking should only be from 2:00 to 5:00 if she has customers that are gonna be parking there at 5:00 o'clock in the morning. I don't know when she's open. I do not know.
I think what Rick's saying is sometimes we start snow emergencies at like noon and we'll go until 8:00 a.m. the next morning. Well, we don't deal with Main Street until after 2:00 a.m. So right now, we would have to tell all the businesses.
All the businesses.
Get everybody out by noon. Main Street should be cleared.
No, it says, "When the snow ordinance has been placed into effect pursuant to this subsection, parking on the streets in these announced areas will, shall be prohibited from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m." So if you're, if we put something in a snow emergency, snore, that's a snow emergency, they can't park there from 2:00 to 6:00. It doesn't say anything about the snow emergency. So they could park there till 2:00 in the morning, but they have to move it at 2:00 in the morning. That's kinda how I'm reading it.
The only problem we're addressing is to get the cars out of there for snow emergencies. So why not just limit it to parking, no parking during snow emergencies? People understand, we gotta get the snow off the street.
But they, the snow emergencies, they ain't gonna be downtown plowing at noon. I mean, if you say, because what Rick's saying, if he puts a snow emergency in at 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 the next morning, so does that mean you can't park on Main Street for that 24 hours?
24 hours, no. It's during a snow emergency.
That's kinda what you're saying.
And 2:00 a.m. to 6:00.
Yeah, that's why I always thought it was like no parking until this, or until the emergency is over.
See, I took it the way Doug read it. The snow emergency was to let people know that starting at 2:00 a.m., they can't park there till 5:00 a.m., but it'll give us a chance to get through town, get the snow emergency.
I mean, that gives you basically three hours to get the downtown done, which...
Well, not only downtown, Washington and Jackson.
Yeah, because those are also in the snow.
Yeah.
But I think it'll be alright because she don't open till 6:00 a.m.
Oh, she doesn't open until 6:30?
Oh, you checked that?
Okay. I think she is.
But I mean, that's, when they come down, I mean, that could be the first thing they plow is over there too, you know? So I mean, once it's plowed, you don't care, you know, if they park there. I mean, once it's plowed.
It's really not for much during the snow. It's the second day that it's a problem.
When you pick it up.
Because you got all the businesses that shovel everything to the curb. And especially with her, a lot of her clientele's older and elderly. So stepping over that ice mound that they're leaving, if we can't get in there and get that cleared off, that's, and that's all businesses, I guess, not just hers. I mean, that's the insurance, all the hair salons and everything, getting there.
She's not usually open when I come home at 5:30 on Fridays.
She's not?
What's the, why are we looking at this? What's bringing this? Why do we wanna change it?
We, so, I mean, according to our ordinance, you have, this should be year-round.
Right.
You know? And so, I mean, you're saying if anybody, like the Main Street apartments up at the very end, you know, I'm just, and I'm just using them as an example, but they can't park there in July, you know, which we gotta, what we're looking at is, what we have the problems is the wintertime, you know? So like if we went from, and I'm just, October 31st till April 1st or whatever, that there is no parking on Main Street from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. That gives Travis and the guys a chance to get everything plowed and if they don't go about it, I mean, that gives us the right to tell them right away and... I mean, I know, I know...
You're saying just regardless of no parking there, whether we're in a snow emergency or not?
Yeah, I mean...
But if we're truly doing it for a snow emergency, that really doesn't help them because it doesn't do anything for Washington or...
We could just say, "No parking during a snow emergency until the snow's been removed."
But see, we don't declare a snow emergency for everything. So if we get a four-inch snow, I'm generally not gonna declare a snow emergency unless it's a wind and it's gonna blow around and drift. So then therefore, that means people are gonna park there because we didn't declare the emergency. And what's getting us, I guess the whole problem is, is we come in thinking there's gonna be nobody there, so we make arrangements and I bring guys in. Well, now we're here at 4:00 and we can't do anything and we're here at 3:00 and so...
Well, how would you rate it to solve your problem with snow?
I think you need like, I think just do months. I mean, if you wanna, I, I mean, I feel, I've gotten parking tickets down there. I've drove down there and visited an establishment there and left my truck there and got a parking ticket. But in the middle of July, that shouldn't be the case, or if those residents have friends come over, they should be able to park on Main Street overnight. I would say our, my problem would be from November to April 1st, somewhere in there.
And is there any reason that you guys would have a problem with somebody parking there in the summer months overnight? Would it create any issues for you guys? For you guys, Brandon?
In all fairness, the people that park on Main Street, I, at this point now, I have all their phone numbers. And so I mean, it got down to this last phone storm when I was like, CJ, give me the car. Simple enough. So if there was a, an odd, out-of-place emergency in August, you know, it would be similar that we really would knock on the door and call them and say, hey, we have an emergency, give me the car. I mean, it's not like you don't know who these people are or see them every day. They're just confused on when they're supposed to park there, when they're not supposed to park there.
So what date were you looking at, Travis?
I don't know. I'd say end of November to April 1st.
End of November?
Well, I mean, we generally, I mean, Thanksgiving.
This is Iowa.
I know, but, I mean, we had, we had snow in October, so I think...
So do you think November 1st to like March 31st?
I think November 1st is still, still early.
Yeah. And if it does snow, a lot of times it melts off the next day.
Well, I guess here's the thing. If we have it in there for the snow emergency, I guess if it happens in November and you need those cars out of there, you declare a snow emergency.
Yeah, you declare.
If it doesn't fall within your time.
I mean, to be less intrusive on everybody, I think if we do end of November to April 1st, that should cover us and get us to our basketball and wrestling tournaments when we normally have the snow in March, so...
Okay, Connie, so you know what to change and bring it back to us?
I'm changing that from the end of November to April 1st, and then we're going to change the fire hydrant from just five feet to five feet on either side. Anything else?
Anything else?
So we're, is that what we're just talking about, the downtown?
Yes.
So, so if we're, let me get this right. So like if, for November, end of November to March or whatever, like Frank's or Horik can't park on the street then? Or is it just during a snow emergency?
Just during the snow emergency. He would be fine. This is downtown.
Just the two blocks of downtown.
Okay.
From Jackson to Walnut.
Yep.
So is there, so can't talk about any, what else?
Yeah, we can talk about...
Yeah, talk about anything you want.
I wanted to take away the parking on West South Street, 203 feet?
West South Street, West South Street.
Right over your mom and dad's house, old place.
I agree with you on that one. But I can see where the hardship would come with those residents because they really don't have a whole lot of parking, other than going down that alley, right?
Correct.
On either side of Jefferson.
On South Street.
Yeah, on either side.
Are you, are you talking year-round or just during snow?
No, year-round. I just wanna extend it down to the, to the apartments, being that they got the new track and stuff there, give them more, more places to park.
Oh, you wanna extend more parking?
Oh, I thought you wanted to take it away.
Because you can, you can, you can park basically the Libby and Rollins' house now.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't like that right there because you're coming up that hill and, you know, you can't see until the last second and those guys have to go out around that car. I drive that road every day.
Straightening his way.
Yeah, but something happened and we got rid of parking there. We took it away.
I mean, there's parking just, just when you get right to the middle of that hill, right? Or right at the top of that hill.
You got, you got basically delivering Rollins' driveway.
Because I know sometimes in the, in the mornings, if you're driving, that sun hits you right in the face.
They pretty much take up that whole section with their vehicles.
And I know that can be, it's, that's a hard place. I, I don't, I don't know.
Was the street narrowed when you put the trail in? Was that one of the reasons?
Well, that's, I feel like it did have something to do with the bike trail or the walk, the path, whatever, like, so I don't know.
I wasn't here then, do you remember?
I don't remember, way before me.
John, you were here.
Yeah, you were.
I remember it was a visibility issue there when you come up that hill.
See, and you know, and that's the bad thing about, you know, when the school did this addition and everything, they said they were going to provide additional parking and they never did.
Yeah. I do remember that. Well, we have a meeting with them next month.
Well, I thought that, that grass area, I thought they were gonna use that grass area, the practice field, as some overflow parking. I thought that's what they said.
They go park there this year.
Or systems and it's quite out if they will.
Hmm. They go park there this year.
Would you guys like me to put that on the agenda for them?
I think so, because we have an April meeting with them. I think that would be to ask about parking.
Systems and we can do it and bring it to you guys.
I'd be, I mean, I'd be against the extra parking there, especially in wintertime. Just because if you go to Pride Street, to Rotten's House, South Street, it's everything I can do to try to get the dump truck down through there. So if we have a heavy snow, we actually have to take the backhoe down there and push through it because our trucks can't push it. And I was, I was going back and forth the last week with the guys on whether we go for no parking from Pride Street to Jefferson at least, but then I feel they would just park on Walnut and Jefferson and create problems there, at least. At least now we know where it is and we can kinda control the beast. So now you would just be stretching that from Pride Street past personal purposes.
I'd say we bring it up in our meeting and...
Yeah.
Talk about the parking and...
Leave it the way it is for now and then address it with the school board, see what their plans are and how we can make more parking.
And then trying to back out of those apartments that are down there, you can't see as it is in the morning. So I think if you had a car sitting there, it'd just make it that much worse. That's what I could assume on why they pushed it. Yeah.
Anything else? Ricky, anything else? Amy? Brandon? You know what to make the changes, Connie?
Yep.
Possible setting of public hearing for change to city code of ordinance, chapter 69.
I would like to, if you do wanna set the public hearing to change the ordinance, I would like to do it the first one in April, due to the publication of the newspaper and just give us a little opportunity to case anything, to talk about it one more time.
So moved.
Motion by John.
Does that, what day is that then, Muck County?
Can you see it, Sarah?
11th?
Second Monday in April.
Oh, April 13th.
It's the 13th.
Motion by John, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by you. Sarah? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Set public hearing for copier lease.
Our five-year lease is up with our current copier company. We did go out for requests for proposals and you guys approved the low bid. In order for us to go into a contract more than three years, we'd have to hold a public hearing, so I would like to set that. And we should be able to do that at our next meeting.
Yeah, motion?
So moved.
The motion, motion by John, second by Travis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Review and possible action of sick leave policy.
Um, we were, Megan from our law firm was reviewing all of our policies and then she left the law firm and went to another one, so it just kinda got left. So we wanted to start looking at those policies again. Some of them may have to be reviewed by the city attorney because sometimes Iowa code changes and it affects ours, or the federal laws change and it affects ours. So we're gonna be putting some of these policies on the agenda, just, I mean, they may not need to be changed and they're something that may need to be changed, but just for review with you guys. We're starting off with the sick leave policy, which I gave you guys a copy of. And there, thing that we wanted to look at mainly on here was, it's kind of general when we talk about the use of sick leave. So if you read the paragraph, it's pretty, it could be interpreted that the six-month, I mean, that the sick leave is, can only be used for the employee because it says you are eligible to use sick leave for any non-work-related illness, injury, or temporary disability. It doesn't say family members or this or that. So we just wanted to get clarification on that, what you, how you guys interpret that and if there's anything else on this that needs clarification. But we just kinda wanted to start, since I don't think any of our policies have been reviewed for probably 10 years or more, we're just gonna start going through the policy book just to make sure we've, nothing has changed or nothing needs to be changed.
So, let's say, I'm just gonna use Travis as an example. Travis has gone for three days, used sick days, three days in a row. Does he have to have a doctor's excuse after that?
He would have to have a doctor's approval to come back to work.
After three days?
After two days.
Two days, okay.
So your third day you're gone, you have to have a doctor's excuse to come back.
Is that somewhere in the sick leave policy or...?
It's in the contract.
It's in the, the union, the union contracts.
Yeah, but union contract don't cover Connie or Rick.
I don't see it.
I don't see it on this page, but, and that's one of the other things we wanna, we started working on that before to make sure that the...
It is in there.
The union, the union contract and that regular policy, they're saying, and we thought we had caught all of those, but there are just a couple more that we'll be going over through this process too.
I don't like the part about the abuse because I think it's very vague and it leaves it, like, who decides?
Well, that's where...
That's one of the things he was wanting to...
I was concerned about, especially Connie and I and my department have an agreement, but Connie's possibly not gonna be here after December, so I wanted to get this kinda in writing and firm, so the next person comes in, we, this is the rule.
This is what it is, yeah.
So there's no gray areas. And right now, I think the abuse one is kind of a, kind of a gray area.
General, yeah.
But I don't know, I don't legally what we can do. I mean, we're giving them a sick day a month. I mean, I look at it as I'm making it for, for when I have the big one. You don't need to be in the hospital for a while. That's, that's my, my uses. Where other people might deem they get it, they earned it, so it's theirs. They can use it.
I mean, if they use them one at a time and you're not requiring a doctor's note, I don't know how you can stop them.
But that's what I want you guys to tell me, because then if we sit down a year from now and it's, well, so-and-so's used all the sick time, you know, he's gone a few months, why are you allowing that? Because our policy allows it. Because our policy allows it.
Might check and see what's acceptable, 'cause I don't know how you'd word it and have it clear. Certainly if somebody says, "I'm taking a sick day," and then they go to the beach and go sailing or something, are they really sick?
Are, um, I'm just asking, 'cause I'm just thinking about everywhere else. Is it per the union contract that they have to be sick days?
Yeah, I mean, that's what they're labeled in there.
That's what I was gonna ask, like a PTO, just paid time off.
Yeah, why can't it just be paid time off?
True. Because right now, if it's, it's sick, so they don't use it unless they're sick, so they, it'll accumulate, so if they, they're off and have to have surgery or something, they've got days banked to be, to use. If you have, um, PTO, they're gonna use them as soon as they get them. So when the time comes, they're, they're gonna have nothing to use.
I understand that thought process, but I will tell you that I do not get sick days. I get paid time off. I get vacation days and four personal days a year. And if I had to be in the hospital for three weeks right now or four weeks, I would have plenty of time to do that, but it's called being a responsible adult.
But how much can you bank?
That's the point, right?
I can bank...
We can only bank one week right now, so...
Well, I, I can bank...
What do you mean, you can only bank one week?
For our carryover.
For carryover.
Thanks, that's where it is looking from.
I can bank all of it plus one week. I can have, I could save a one whole year plus a week from the year before and have that onto the next. So...
What do, what do you mean, you can only bank a week?
We only carry over a week of our vacation.
Oh, vacation, that doesn't say sick time, you got 110 days.
Yeah, what she's saying is using it as for paid time off, we can only carry over one week of the paid time.
The way, the way our vacation is set up, I know, is, like, I get a year right now, so I can carry a year over.
You get a year?
Yeah. My sister gets five weeks. Or I get, I get a week, sorry.
Wait a second. I am going there, I wanna work there.
Your sister gets a year, or gets five weeks, where she could carry five weeks over. So however many weeks you accrue, you can carry that over.
I get five weeks and I can take five weeks plus one. So I could carry over six weeks. Like, if I had a week from last year and now this year, I could carry that into the next one.
Sick time or just PTO?
PTO. That's what I'm saying, it's not, it's not broken out. I could be at the beach, I could be home dying, it doesn't matter.
It's all bundled into one.
I'll tell you, every government has this problem.
Yep.
From agency, and the only way, it's very tricky, there's no good way to put it. So, I would recommend doing the PTO thing, and getting the contract that way, and then when employees burn up all their time and they're gone, they're called, it's called AWOL, they're absolutely out of leave.
Yeah, sorry about your luck.
And then you deal with the discipline at that point. That's, that's why you're going to, truly, now, if they call in sick in their football game or something like that, then that's one thing, but...
Well, but if it's paid time off, they don't have to call in anything.
Yeah, I'm just saying right now, on sick leave, that's really the only way you can do this.
But how do they break that down, Brandon? Some employees have two weeks, some employees have one week.
So you'd have to figure out, like, what, 'cause I'm sure there's people here that are probably close to my thousand sick leave, you know, several hundred hours. So you'd have to figure out how you would do that.
How you convert it?
How you convert it. And you, you wanna keep in mind that these people that have saved their time are really probably doing it honestly, and the ones that have used it are probably not, so you may consider one to one. But then what you wanna do is make sure that you open that carryover period, you can still cap it. They, our, it works at 14, 1446, I don't know, something thousand or something like that hours for vacation. If you made it a PTO, you'd wanna expand that, obviously, so that realistically, you'd wanna, I don't know, if you have short-term disability here, you'd wanna, to at least get to that point, you know, before the...
Well, I don't know how your short-term disability works, but like, at my job, okay, well, but how much of their own time do they have to use before, like, I have to use four days and then my short-term kicks in, but I only have to use four of my own days.
So 686 hours gives you the long-term disability. So that might be a number down the road to throw out there or something like that, but, um, you definitely wanna have a wider gap. You know, like, somebody's got, right now is getting five weeks of vacation, and, and, you know, you might wanna go 686 plus five weeks, whatever that would be to accommodate their, their length of vacation plus sick leave they don't have, because it's qualified with PTO.
I mean, yeah, because I don't, I don't foresee that if you open it up as paid time off and you give these people that have banked their sick ti, sick time, their time, that all of a sudden they're gonna take three months off because it's not sick time anymore. I mean, you would take it off if you wanted to take it off. The people that have been saving it, like I said, are just mature, responsible adults that know how to manage their life.
We have extreme and extreme.
And my guess is the ones that save their sick leave also have vacation use, and the ones that have nothing have nothing.
Well...
That's what I said, we have extreme and extreme.
Is there anybody who has nothing? Maybe one employee that has nothing? I don't know. I, I definitely don't like the abuse clause in there, I don't like the way that that looks or sounds, but...
Why don't you something?
And maybe it doesn't have to be paid time off, maybe it's just personal time, where it doesn't, 'cause personal time, if you have a sick kid and your wife has to go to work and you need to stay home and you don't have vacation, you can take a personal day to stay home with your kid. I get four personal days a year, in, in addition to my vacation. So, I mean...
And I think the clarification we're looking at, too, is use of sick leave, because, is it you guys' intent that it's for the employee only, or is it your intent to, 'cause in the past we've allowed, if they have a sick kid at school, they have to go pick up that kid, we let them take sick time. If their husband's having surgery and they have to go sit at the hospital with them that day, bring them home, we, we allow that for sick time. So, we kinda wanted clarification on that, too, just so, um, just so we know in the future. We wanna keep it straight across the board. If we let such-and-such take time off, take, use a sick day to take their daughter to the, the doctor or to get a school physical, we're gonna do that for the next person. So that's, that's where we really wanted clarification, and then the other stuff we can, we can talk about for...
Well, it's just my opinion, I do believe that they should be able to use it for their family.
What's that?
I do believe they should be able to use it for their family.
Oh, yeah, I, most places I've ever worked always allowed it. Sick time for a family, too. I mean...
So can we kinda go over how you guys would, how we should change the wording on that, so?
Well, if you did make it just personal time, then there'd be no discussion of what they're taking it for. It, it would make it simpler.
I mean, I get vacation and I get personal time, and it's two separate things, and it's in my time thing is two separate things.
For, for like vacation, though, you'd give, give a week or two's notice, whereas personal time, you'd maybe a day's notice.
No, I might walk in there tomorrow and be like, "I'm out."
Okay.
Yep.
We all have to realize, Stephanie has a unique situation.
Hi Boo is very lenient when it comes to that, I mean...
I think it depends on if you're abusing it.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, you know...
I mean, you can go in there and be there for five minutes and look at your manager and be like, "You know what? Take this day off. Can't do it today."
Great for you.
And, and you get to use either personal time, vacation time...
Or like, every Friday.
Yeah, I just, I just think that would be the, the intent, would be vacation is planned and notified.
I agree, and you could put that in there.
Notified so the employer can secure other resources, whereas PTO is, "I need a day for taking my daughter to the doctor."
You could put in there, I mean, this part about giving the hour notice or whatever, you could have in there, vacation time needs to be scheduled 72 hours in advance, or a week in advance, or two weeks in advance, whatever it is that you like.
That is.
And then on the PT, or on the personal time, it needs to be notified an hour before you use it. I mean, that, that would be very easy.
Fair enough, yeah.
If you wanted to limit it that way.
I, I don't know, I just...
And I think that that's reasonable.
'Cause, I mean, I'd hate to see a situation where, you know, Travis has a project and someone doesn't like doing that type of work, so they take a PTO.
Yeah.
And we have such a small staff that, that we would run into problems.
Yeah, you can't afford somebody to just be like, "I'm not working on Friday."
Yeah, especially when we have water testing to do, sewer testing to do, um, like I said, we, we need to know we have a police officer on duty and...
On my vacation, I can carry over the five weeks plus one, but on my personal time, I can carry over 30 days. That's what I can have on there anytime, is 30 days.
Do you, do you actually go to work?
Unless it's Friday.
Okay, we're all gonna resign to my own position.
So, for right now, if Travis, you're just looking at clarifying it, we're not looking to change it right now.
No, no. We're just, we're just opening up for discussion, and like I said, we're gonna go down the line and go through other personal policies.
But if it is part of the union contract, and we're getting ready to negotiate the union contracts real soon, so it would be, I mean, that's why it's important to have this conversation.
That's why, that's the other thing, is, is if you guys are leaning more towards the PTO, then it helps for Connie and I to know that going into...
Negotiations.
Negotiations, so we're not wasting time.
I mean, I would be in favor of vacation time and personal time. And vacation time, you give a two-week notice, personal time, you give a one-hour notice. Then that way, you're not setting people up to get in trouble, because there is going to come a time, I would assume, I would imagine, for some people...
Oh, a notice is really gonna be...
You know...
And I can't survive on a one-hour notice from Christina telling me she's not gonna be here. I mean, when, there's just two of us in the office, I don't...
But that's what you get right now.
That's sick.
That's what I'm saying, you just turn the sick, personal.
You're just turning, you're just turning sick time into personal, it's, it's just the wording of it, so that way they don't have...
That way you don't have to be policing everybody and babysitting on whether or not they're really sick, you know? And people don't have to feel guilty about, you know, maybe they need to, I mean, I will tell you personally, Amy, I had to get my plates renewed, and I work most of the time during those hours, and so it was really hard for me to get there. So that would've been something where I would've wanted to take a couple hours off to go do that. If I didn't have vacation and I had to use sick time, you know, at least this opens it up for them to be honest about what they're using it for, and it doesn't set people up for...
Could the additional, a flip side be to, so we get one day a month, as it is right now? Could you just put all those in their account on January 1st and say, "Hey, if you're by the end of February, that's..."
Because then somebody in, somebody who's not working here in September could use those days in January, February, March, and then they could leave, and that would just be...
That, that's what we got at Rockwell. We get seven days at the beginning of the year. If you wanna use them for the first seven days, use them for the first seven days.
I get one every quarter.
And then we accrue our vacation monthly.
Well, and I, I'm, meaning, George, like, you're saying something that, yeah, in three years, I think I've used seven days, you know, and so, the thought of not gonna do anything happening, you know, we can't, I don't have a crystal ball for that, so I don't know what that looks like. So, be responsible, you beg that far.
But we, 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 right now, we got an, we got an employee that, if we gave him 12 days first of the year, they'd be gone by February.
Correct, exactly. But I think that's a better problem.
I'm not saying, that happens everywhere. I mean, they, I see people at Rockwell do it, I mean, there's people that have nothing left.
Correct. And we have that, too.
So you won't bank the sick leave, right?
Yeah, you can bank so much of it.
Well, I mean, you're not gonna put them in a PTO, right?
We're not making any decisions tonight, we're just...
What do you mean, put them in a PTO?
No, you wouldn't do that, right? So let's just say, if you didn't make a decision, you're gonna say, "No, I, anybody's gonna have just $600, and I gotta get almost 800 and some, would I get it broke down into one day of sick leave, one day of vacation, or?"
I don't know if we're ready to really think about that, are we?
I don't understand what he's saying, 'cause in my theory, there would be no more sick time.
So he's got a bank...
He's got a lot of time.
He's got 880 hours.
His worry is that he'll lose some of that time if we change it.
Oh, I don't think that would, I, I don't know. That would not be my intent, for anybody to lose anything.
You, you earned it, I, I don't think you would take it away.
Why would you punish them for making a change?
I just don't know what that would look like.
But instead of you having whatever in personal time, maybe you would now have whatever, or whatever, instead of having whatever you have now in sick days, you would maybe have that in personal time. It would just be a different name.
Right.
But we'd still take half years. I mean, I think me and Amy are gonna go to the casino, so...
I think the other thing that the city could think about, I don't know if anybody else would be in favor of this, but the other thing that the city could think about, if somebody's sitting here with a boatload of time sitting there, um, I, maybe you already offered, I don't know, but buying it back at a certain percentage rate of what its value is.
Sick time you lose if you leave employment, the only way you would get paid for any sick time is if you actually retire through the IFRS program, and then there's a clause that says you get paid for half of your sick time.
Half of it, that's what mine is, too, yeah.
That's what we have now. So it would be kinda hard, I mean, I'm, I'm talking in a financial aspect here, so if we did buyouts and we've got several employees with $900, the max of sick time, you guys realize how much money we're talking about.
I don't think you, you need to buy anybody out, they just roll it over, but now it's a sick time.
That would be a legendary nightmare.
It'd be personal time.
I think that before, that's what we wanted to get away from, is having these huge...
Well, and that's, you know, and you got, right, right now, you got 100 and, accumulation to 110 days. I mean, so if you turned that all to personal time, they, by right, can take off 110 days.
Yeah.
Right, but what I'm...
Rick could take off 110 days.
I can see the program working, but transferring over to it is gonna be...
Yeah, it's gonna, you're gonna have to sit down and think of a conversion, but what I'm saying to you is, I don't think that Rick would, I mean...
I understand that, but I'm just saying, he's got it right now.
I know, but I'm saying, look at the employees who have it right now, and you know their character, their work ethic, their, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't really see anybody abusing that once we transfer it over. It's not like the people who are using all their sick time have any to bank or transfer over, that they would just instantly use it all anyway, because they're already using it.
I, I agree with you 100% on that, but I, I just think 110 days is very extreme. I think that...
Stop, approve it. Take 110 days, you have...
Not if they're taking personal time off, they can call in an hour before.
Well, but it says that you have to have a note or something like that, so there's nothing saying you can't put...
Yeah, we just changed the verbiage, that if they do it two days in a row, the third day, they gotta have the doctor's note.
No, they don't have to have a doctor's note, but you could say, um, personal time. So if, in your, when you're doing the transfer, you would have to do it this way for the initial transfer. If you have banked personal time, you are allowed to use seven days of it in one shot, and then you have to come back to work for at least 60 days, or something like that, or 90 days or something.
Yeah, we have unlimited vacation, you can take two weeks of vacation, but you have to then work two paid periods before you can take any more time off.
Yeah, and you would have to do that for the initial conversion.
That's what I said, that would be the first part.
There's no way.
It's the conversion would be the, the biggest.
And that's what you do, you put that...
You have to, yes, you have to put disclaimers on things.
So if I gotta take chemo treatments, and that's part of the reason why I bank mine is with my family history, I put it out there, I watched what my parents went through, you know, and the time that they needed to be away from work, that's the whole reason I'm not using my stuff. So you're saying with that, though, is, I'd have to come back to work?
I'm saying for the initial transitional period, and whether that transitional period is the first year, the first two years, whatever that initial first transitional period is that would be determined, you would have to put a clause in there about how much of it they could use at one time, and how long they would have to come back to work in between, I'm not saying forever, I'm just saying to get through all the people who have 100 hours.
It's just the transition hours, yeah.
So that you would eliminate somebody taking 110 hours of personal time.
'Cause you're gonna set a limit, but you're gonna have the grandfather people in that have more than that limit, so...
And for those people, you would have to set stipulations.
My husband's employer also bases their, um, wage increase based on...
Attendance?
Attendance average of the entire department. So if he's above average, then he gets, you know, whatever, whatever. If he's below, he doesn't get it.
Well, you would be silly to think that I would sit up here and be in favor of giving somebody any kind of decent raise if we offered this program to somebody to help them, and then they took 110 days off in a row. I mean, I would never, ever be in favor of that. So, again, a smart person would probably understand how all that works.
But that also could punish someone who had a legitimate cancer or some illness that didn't, I mean, it, there, again, you're putting it in the hands of someone to make a decision in their opinion, oh, I don't think, yeah, so it's...
And you would have to decide who that person's gonna be.
Yeah, that's tough, too.
And it's gonna have to be the same person for everybody.
The easiest way to do it is have a pool of hours and keep your leads, keep your vacation, your sick leave, your personal leave, and then whatever you use, you have definitions on how those are used that pull from this. If you're using it for sick leave, you have a definition on what you can use that time for. If you want a vacation, you know you have to schedule in advance. If you want a vacation, you know you have to schedule in advance. And then I, when you get your two personal days, so personal days, you still keep that definition.
You have everything that rolls up into one thing, but you have three different buckets, personal, sick, vacation.
If you're, if you're not coming to work because you're sick, by definition, those just come out at one day at a time.
But that doesn't help their problem of who gets to use sick days, and how do they get to use them, and what happens if you call in sick and then we see you at Brothers Brian Roast Chicken.
You wouldn't have to call in, you had to say you were sick. If I called in saying I'm gonna be here today, they, they have to ask why, well, I'm sick. If, if they say, well, I'm taking a vacation, then no, you didn't get scheduled.
But what if you tell me that you're sick, and then I see you over at Brothers Brian Roast Chicken?
Discipline, I actually...
Perhaps Bills have a drink.
Well, this is something that's gonna be rolled into the contract, any changes, so I don't think we'll resolve anything here tonight.
No, or like, what if I tell you that I have to take my daughter to the doctor, my daughter's homesick, and then you see me at Bills having a drink that night, or whatever? Well, my wife came home. I mean, there's easy ways to explain it, it just makes it harder to...
Just creates hard feelings.
What we probably should do is set up, like, maybe a committee or something of some people who wanna hash it out with, like, a couple of employees, I mean, obviously, I think Travis should be one, 'cause he'll be in the union negotiations, and try to come up with a good compromise, or a good way that it works in everybody's benefit.
And it could be they come back with a plan to us at negotiations, too. We're not there yet, so...
Yeah.
But he just wanted, he, he wanted to put this on the agenda tonight, just to get some input, and I think that's part of the thing, 'cause he's going in the negotiations. So, good discussion.
Anything else?
I think that's why we kinda let that one fall away, is 'cause it's a big old can of worms.
I know, but somebody's gonna have to deal with it someday.
Yeah, what's gonna happen, and it's been me and her, and, I mean, she's obvious, like you said, she'd have to renew, then it's just leaving me there, and I don't wanna be left out in the cold by myself dealing with this anymore, so...
A lot of good ideas were thrown around, I'd, I'd love it if we could get a copy of Brandon's policy, that wherever you, you know, wherever you work, you can see, you can see how that policy works, because he's got some good ideas.
We can't be the only one that has this issue.
But not like what they were suggesting, they went to it, everything, everything's PTO, there's no, there's no different, I don't...
Everything's PTO, like their vacation, everything is PTO?
Everything, I don't, I feel for the, those employees that have been diligent, banking for the future, shouldn't be penalized, and...
Agreed.
And that's kinda what happened over there, there was some hard feelings with some employees when they went to that.
What would the penalty be?
They lost time.
Oh.
Yeah, 'cause you set a level, and then you just bring everybody into that level period.
So new employees are now at the same level that guys have been there forever.
You know, while we're discussing this, is it true that you have to work in the city for a year before you get vacation?
Yes.
I would be in favor of looking at that again, too.
It was, it was like that before, and it didn't, didn't really work.
It's usually, that's, that's most employees don't have anymore.
Yeah.
You have to be there, you have to accrue it, and so you're gonna earn it over a year.
It was always that way, and then they had one employee that they hired that...
No kidding.
There's a lot of places that give you vacation right away now, that's how you get good employees today.
That's right, you give it to them, and I'm not saying maybe today, but like, most employees, or any that I know of, maybe not city employee, but most employees, you, you are 30 days, 60 days, and then you get...
A day or two.
A week or something, and then you earn the rest as you go. I mean, you don't have nothing for a whole year.
For a stinking year, right.
That's a hard pill to swallow.
You still have personal days.
And I have talked to Karen about that, about the whole year.
I think that's a long time. I know that there's people who, in their negotiations for a job, will negotiate their time off in there before they'll even accept the position.
Yeah.
So...
We hired a guy, gave him three weeks right off the bat.
Well, you would for a good employee.
Exactly.
All right, anything else?
Um, you might wanna ask whoever's doing the, the law firm that, or whatever, I believe that you cannot ask why they're calling in.
You gotta be creative.
What do you mean?
What, am I...
You have to be creative.
You have to be very creative.
If you're asking for the betterment of the safety of other employees...
Yes, yes, you can, but you have to be very careful on how you word it, because technically, the employee does not have to give you a reason.
Well, I think that that's probably different.
They, 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 they can tell you that they're taking the day off, but they don't have to tell you why.
I think that's different if they're using sick leave, and, and, and what you're referring to is more like FMLA.
No, 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 I don't, no, I think it's, I think it's...
I unfortunately couldn't speak from experience, that she was correct, that in a previous employment place, I was off for a certain amount of time in their sick leave, and they kept pushing, saying, no, you have to tell us why.
It's something we might wanna ask Mark.
We don't ask what sickness they have, we just ask if they're sick, they're taking personal time, or what they're...
Right, but I, they don't necessarily have to tell you.
Oh, no, huh, we don't do that.
No, but if you call in sick, and they see you at the local bar, they don't, I mean, if you're calling in sick, you're calling in sick.
You're self-medicating.
I like John's way to think of it.
John's coming out of his mouth.
We don't even ask what they have, because they don't...
I don't even ask, I wanna know where you self-medicate.
Yeah, specifics, but if they're gonna use sick time, they have to tell you they're sick.
They're calling in sick, or they're calling in for PTO, yeah, no, we don't ever ask what they have.
All right, anybody else? Correspondents?
Don't have anything.
Uh, City Engineer Report.
Dave came by to see me earlier, he was planning on being at the meeting, but he had a meeting scheduled early evening with, um, one of the DOT on regarding Business 30. That person did not show up, he had a confusion and forgot he was supposed to be here, so Dave is meeting with him tomorrow, and after that, he's going to come and talk with Travis and I. He's pretty close on, um, negotiations for Business 30, so he should have something for us to, to report to you guys real soon. And he's also working on the plan, so we can apply for the CDBG grant, um, for the water project, we're about two months more of work to do on that, so it should be around June before we start planning on that, or applying for the grant, what is it, UIP, IUP? IUP that we have to have for that, so he's working on that. Travis had a whole bunch of information together for them, Christina helped, too, I appreciate all the work that they did for that, um, so we're looking at the possibility of maybe getting another $500,000 grant, it just depends for that project, but, um, so we'll have more information on that also.
So hypothetically, let's say DOT comes back and says, we're gonna give you $1.5 million for fix everything, how soon do we fix that?
It's up to us. What, he's also in negotiations, or not negotiations, but in talks with Lynn County and Mount Vernon, because if we all do a joint project together, it would probably be cheaper, but that's totally up to the three parties. I mean, we could sit on the money, do the project a year from now, we could do it two years from now, we could do it immediately, it's, it's up to us, so it's also up to them the same way. So if they don't wanna do the project at the same time we do it, then we, we can't do it together. But if we can do it, all three of us do it together, it would be cost-effective for all of us. So Dave's also working on that, too.
Okay, anything else from the group City Engineer?
Nope, that was it.
Public Work.
Uh, same thing County said with the engineer stuff, um, we're, uh, we're still working on trimming, if we didn't get anybody's brush picked up last Monday, probably because it was still frozen, um, due to the weather, and hopefully the rain loosened everything up, we're gonna start going around and hitting, hitting the town again with the chipper, um, and then get started on leaves, too, before they get out of control, start blowing around.
We also wanna remind people, this is happening, um, a lot, and it just continues to get worse. Once we go through your neighborhood for brush pickup, don't put another pile out that night, 'cause we're not coming back the next day. We have been making special trips for that, but it's killing us. So if you put your brush out, we go through your neighborhood on Monday, don't put another pile out Tuesday or Wednesday, 'cause we're not gonna come back. We're keeping maps now, and documenting the roads that we've been to, because it's, it just keeps happening and happening, and we're going back in the same neighborhoods over and over and over again, and we, we're spending eight days to do two days of brush, because people keep doing that so...
Is there somewhere that they can go to see, like, where, when and where?
It's, it's in the newsletter, and it's always this, um, it's the same dates every year, the second is the first one?
But I mean, so...
The website, or...
There's like a couple days that you do it?
It's first Monday of every month.
And you don't always get it done on the first Monday, or you do always get it done on the first Monday?
No, sometimes we do.
So, do you have like a route where you start, like, I'm definitely gonna be here on Monday, but it might be Tuesday when I get down here, or no?
A lot of the time, it just depends, like, driving around, if we see that, say, the avenues are really bad, then we'll start in the avenues. If the bonds, for some reason, got hit hard, then we'll go down there. Um, there is no set, just, the guys like to go down...
Everybody should have it out on that Monday.
Yeah, just have it out on that Monday, and that's why we do the map, because I can't tell you when, and normally that Monday, if we have a water main break, or something happens at the sewer plant, Mina and I get out there, tell Tuesday, so...
And it's, does this start, the regular pickups in April, or...
We started in March.
In March?
Yep.
And there was yard waste pickup today.
Yep.
Okay.
We've, we've had some that have put out three days, or, you know, it's just like, we can't, we can't keep coming back. We've been nice, we've really, really been nice, believe me, but we just can't keep doing it.
Well, are you getting calls that, that you need to come pick it up, or are they just putting it out for the next, because they have nowhere else to put it?
We're getting both.
Okay. Because, I mean, if a big windstorm comes through, and I just did leaf pick, or I just did limb pickup, whatever, I may just put it at my curb, so I don't forget the next time, 'cause I don't have a place in my backyard to do it.
We do go out after a storm.
Right.
Yeah, we do.
So, um, we're getting, I mean, they're going as far as, like, the bike trail, we'll go through the area, and we'll come back the next day, and they'll have another brush pile, but they'll sit it right on the bike trails, so kids gotta walk around it, and it's just...
So there's other issues along, yeah, gotcha.
So, we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna door tag this year, so be prepared for complaints. Um, if the piles don't meet the regulations, and they're not going, uh, we buy a new set of blades, they're roughly 400 bucks, um, when we reach into a pile that's not stacked the way it should be, I can't, it's hard for us to tell what's in there, and we've run rebar, rocks, everything. I understand why Johnson County wanted to get away from it, I thought they were feeding us stories. We've had enough time on it that they're not feeding us stories.
It's true.
It's true.
If I got a bunch of sticks in a garbage can, is it easy just to pour those in?
It is easy to pour that out, but just keep in mind that it's, when we do pour it out, we gotta pour it on the tailgate first, to make sure that there isn't stuff in there. Uh, most people that pick their stuff up like that don't have it, but we will catch rocks and stuff, and that's hard on...
He's just on fire and stuff.
Yep.
Anything else?
Uh, other than that, uh, next week, weather permitting, later on this week, we can get the street sweeper out, and hopefully all the leaves will be unfrozen from the gutters, and start working on that. That's it.
Police Chiefs, Police Chiefs Report.
Just wanted to remind everybody to get the golf carts registered, um, do some checking on them this year, and mopeds, people, these kids that have these mopeds, make sure they got a valid license to drive them, um, just because you have to permit this, you'd be ready to ride your moped, you have to take a class, and that, and, uh, and so, uh, I'll be taking 100 and...
10 days? Good luck, good luck in there, approved.
So, I took that sign in my papers.
Yeah.
You gotta use them all, I'm using them.
Do you have some vacation that you have to use?
What's that?
Are you seriously taking a vacation, or are you just being a smartie?
My max out, I gotta use 100, well, I can carry one week over, so, so that leaves me with 100, I mean, 198 hours.
So you really are gonna be off for a few weeks here, yeah?
And, you know, when we, we want you guys to use vacation every year, I mean, you can carry over what you want, but, I mean, what the max is, but that's the reason we said, we give you that vacation, we want you to use it, you know, so I don't...
Well, you just love working so much, don't you?
We want, I mean, it's, any, anyplace you work, I mean, they want you to use that vacation, they want you to recharge.
That's what I'm saying, see?
I'm not giving 110 days off.
Every Friday, she recharges.
Every Friday, I recharge, I need three days. Sometimes two and a half, depending.
Sometimes five.
Anything else, Rick? Fire Chiefs Report.
No.
Yeah, don't you have a dance this weekend?
What's that?
Do we have a dance this weekend?
Yeah, we're gonna do a, uh, four dates, our fundraiser, I said five, so...
Also, you guys had a big fire this weekend, and it was windy, cold, and you guys were out there, well, you responded to it.
But you were there.
We did.
And you were there for a long time.
How did that work with the bypass?
Um...
About the same.
Did it take you longer, obviously it took you a little bit longer to respond, maybe? No?
I don't know, maybe a little bit dropped down, but, um, no, we were, we were there 3:30 till about 10, so it was six and a half hours, and the wind wasn't in our favor, and we did everything we could to save it, kept it in the bay, and ran it off, so we lost it.
You might wanna tell these guys what you and Mount Vernon have talked about on the bypass, or your calls.
Yeah, um, just for the state of the unknown, and, um, I deal with it every day in my real job, people don't have a clue where they're at, and you would not believe how many people probably say they're northbound on Highway 30, so, um, based on that, we decided that we did an auto weight agreement between both agencies, from their jurisdiction all the way to our east jurisdiction, and a big part of that is, um, for example, there could be a call on the highway that's eastbound, that's actually in our district, that they can get to a lot faster, because we would have to, we gotta go past it...
Go past there, then come back, yeah.
Where they can shoot down, and there's probably a good chance that we're gonna get to the westbound side before they would, because obviously they'd have to do the other way, so, um, anyway, we, we decided to do an auto weight agreement out there, and if everybody, somebody gets on scene, you know, it's all kinda one team, so if nobody else is needed, they're gonna disregard the other person, whoever it might be, and, um, we're also looking at something similar for other calls as well, um, just to, uh, make sure all the calls get covered and, um, help each other out. Anything, anything with smoke or fire, we're basically both there anyway, so instead of wasting time and having people respond to the station, it could be six, six minutes to get on the radio, just to tell them, put them in route, they could be coming right away, and save time, hopefully save property and lives and all that good stuff, so...
So you're both just gonna automatically respond if it fits in your...
That's, that's kinda the talks, we're, we're, I talked to Doug about it a while back, and, uh, we're just trying to help each other out, and, uh, utilize all the resources we can, to hopefully, um, you know, do better than, you know, save property and that sort of stuff.
Is that it? City Administrator's Report.
I don't have anything else.
Wow, holy... Mayor's Report, I'd just like to, I don't really care, but I'd like to thank the city workers for my mom for fixing the lights downtown, finally. She's, she's always said that there's lights down underneath those trees, and they're getting them down, so, on, on her, on her behalf, I would like to thank you guys. Um, that's it. Council Report, Travis.
Um, do we have any kind of a schedule for Mechanicsville to be putting that fiber in, or running that around the town?
They hadn't been working in town because of the, the weather and the winter, um, but they, I thought I, we got a whole bunch of locates today, so I'm assuming they're starting back up.
Okay.
I think they got the south side done, don't they, pretty much?
He said they were going to start in this area, um, by the city hall when they start up again, which, like I said, we got probably 10, 12 locates today, so...
But did they already do so at the 30?
I don't know.
'Cause isn't there some people out there who already have it?
I know, I know.
I think south, the, the south is done.
Yeah, Jonas has it, and actually Jonas, I called today, and they're doing, our, our area is set up, so if you have a box, we can go live.
Oh, really?
We just have to change over to their, their...
So you've been drilled into your house and everything already?
I haven't been.
But they don't like you?
I have a box out front, but I don't have one in my house.
I have a box on the house.
They'll drill from that box to your house.
They don't have the wire in there yet, in your area.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they connected it, and said we're live, so as soon as we put in our payment, we're good.
Did you switch to it?
Well, look then, I don't, I don't know if they, they wouldn't have, because they have to...
Who did you have before?
Uh, Dish, I'm on the street.
Was it cheaper?
Oh, yeah.
They take your fence down?
What's that?
They take your fence down?
Huh, they put it in front of the house, itself on the street, um...
Yeah, but I mean, to the house, though.
It's drilled, it's drilled underground.
Yeah.
They're not trenching, they're just drilling?
They'll drill right up to your house, I would assume.
I don't think I'm done. There's no way.
You would be surprised.
They probably didn't drill to your house, I mean, 'cause you probably had to sign up for it. I mean, but they'll have...
They came out and did the survey, talked to the guy.
They'll have the box and everything out front.
Yeah, I've got one.
And then they'll just drill, drill to your house.
All right, that was all I had, I was just wondering about that. I don't have anything tonight.